Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. If you all please rise and join us for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay. I have an adoption of tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that the time?
That's okay, Madison.
Sorry.
You have an announcement that you'd like to make?
Yeah, so I just wanted to call the community's attention to a member of our community who has been reported missing, and her name is Shelley Tichner. And Sheri is going to help me put her photo up in a minute, but her family is very concerned for her and her safety, and if anyone has any information, please contact the Brisbane Police. They have posted some information on their Facebook page, so you can go there and review more information and get in contact with them. Their phone number will be there, too. And here we go. So this is Shelley. And yeah, if anyone has any information, please contact the Brisbane Police. We would all appreciate it. We want her home safe. Thank you.
Can I ask, when has, how long has she been missing?
So I think it was a couple nights ago, maybe Sunday, and she said that around 11:00 PM. I'm not sure on the exact date, but I think it was sometime this weekend, and then she said she was going to a friend's house, and she left at 11:00 PM, and, you know, no, we haven't heard from her since. So we think that she is still around, and so, you know, but more details obviously always helps. So it's ongoing, you know, investigation, looking into, I guess, what maybe prompted this, but either way, you know, if we can get her back safe, we want to do that. So everyone keep your eyes peeled, and she may be, you know, in our neighboring cities and in South City, so even when you're not in Brisbane, just keep your eyes peeled for her.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Madison. All right, so that brings us to oral communications. These are things that are not on tonight's agenda. We have quite a few slips, so if you would be so kind to stay within the five-minute time allotment, that would be greatly appreciated. So first up is Michelle Salmon.
Honorable counsel, Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident, I have a couple of things. One is the dirt piles out there seem to be getting really high and really wide, and I'm wondering if we have a recent report on exactly how high, because we do have a 75-foot limit, I believe. And also, who provides that information? Is it the operator themselves, or do we have an independent source for measuring the height of the dirt piles according to their use permit? Because they really are getting rather tall, rather large, and rather unruly, and it's, I think it's becoming a real danger, especially during the heavy rainy seasons that we've been having. Second, I'd like to announce that San Bruno Mountain Watch is having a plant sale this Saturday at the Mission Blue Nursery from 9:00 to 2:00. It is all native plants grown on San, grown from seed from San Bruno Mountain with permits, and all of the proceeds go back to planting on the mountain and supporting San Bruno Mountain Watch's efforts in habitat restoration and stewardship. So please come on Saturday. It's from 9:00 to 2:00. There was a notice on the board, but it got blown off. Hmm, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Do you have an update at all, Clay, regarding our files?
I believe we get quarterly reports on that, and I'll check on that tomorrow. Well, the reports come in from the, from the operator, and then the city engineering staff reviews it.
All right, thank you. Okay, next up is Patrick Tinter.
I would like to speak for just a moment on an item that I think is not officially on the agenda, but you will address, and that's the letter that you will review and hopefully sign tonight that will go to the FAA, supporting Peter Grace's work regarding airplane noise. Peter cannot be here tonight, but on behalf of him, concerned citizens of Brisbane and myself, we'd like to encourage you to please vote for that, as well as to express our appreciation for doing that. This is a good step forward. It's not the last step, but it's a good, solid step forward to bringing some relief to the city on the noise. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Peter. Just to let you know that all the council members have signed the law.
Already done.
Yes, yes, so we did that, and yeah, we greatly appreciate the work that Peter and other citizens have done, you know, to reduce airplane noise over our city. So you're right, this is not the last step, but, you know, you just got to keep, keep plugging away, and hopefully, eventually, the FAA will listen and make the changes that are necessary to alleviate the problem. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next up is Greg Anderson.
Honorable mayor and city council, I had the pleasure of attending the recent MIG consulting presentation on Parkside, and, you know, overall, it was very well done, and I appreciated their presentation and the information they shared with us, but I wanted to give feedback on a couple of items. I feel that there is a gap that needs to be closed before this goes to the commission. During the presentation, they were talking about a four-story mixed-use. There seemed to be a lot of energy around the idea of mixed-use, and furthermore, they put forward their plan that the commercial areas could be flexible to allow for different kinds of businesses based on needs of, you know, what could go in to this space. But, you know, for all that they had a lot of information, interesting information from their economist about, you know, how many people you need in a given area to support a store, and whether the people from the Baylands would be likely to shop in Brisbane, which they said they likely wouldn't, which I thought was a little surprising. They did not seem to have a notion about any of the base causes for the current vacancies we have specifically at one San Bruno, which is very similar to the sort of thing they're thinking about building, or in the other areas, like along visitation, or in the shopping center. So it's sort of my opinion that if the council isn't already of the mind to just step back and, and leave it at three-story residential, which seems more feasible to me, if you do want to continue to approach the idea of mixed-use, that I think you really need to get more data from their economist about, you know, why do we have these vacancies? And if we build even more, is there going to be any reason why those units would be filled, whereas the others aren't?
All right.
That's my feedback from.
Thank you, Greg, for that. Okay. Next up is Bill Detmer.
Honorable counsel, my name is Bill Detmer, long-term resident of Brisbane. I'd like to talk about Parkside. I feel that Parkside could be a positive thing for this community. I'd like to remind everybody that all it takes is one accident, and if you're in a wheelchair, there's nowhere to live in this town. Basically, this is the city of stairs. If there were a place like Parkside, high-density with an elevator, that means you can live independently, means if you're old, you have a place that's secure with an elevator, you're not going to fall down stairs. If you're young, you might, that might be your first place, a small, little studio apartment and tucked away and overlooking the warehouses, you know. It might be some guy that works in the industrial park, and he commutes to Maniok, and then he could live in this little multi-unit, big block of things, you know. So I think there could be a positive way of looking at this. And myself, if I were old and gray, and I might want a little tiny place that was safe, thanks to the cops and all that, we're, what better place to live than down in central Brisbane where you could take an elevator down and get on your wheelchair lark or whatever and be part of the community, and there's no other place to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Clay, would you mind just kind of giving us a, just a very brief kind of update and kind of next steps for, for Parkside?
Sure. I was planning on doing that later on in the agenda, but now it would probably make more sense. The next step in the process under the contract we have with MIG, which is our consultants, is for there to be a council study session, and we are thinking of April 21st now for that. We would embed it in a regular city council meeting, so it'll be just an item within the council meeting. They'll go over kind of their findings up to this point, and will certainly pass on the comments we've heard tonight from, from members of the community. And I think we also had a request from a council member to have a, the city attorney review the count, the city's obligations under the housing element, and also just kind of remind the council of the, kind of the salient points of the housing element that was passed by the council last year. So we'll accomplish both of those items at your, on April 21st meeting.
All right.
Quick question on that. So at the Parkside workshop, that session that we just had, they, they had all this data they collected from the polling, and they, and we, I think, I at least spoke with them afterwards about whether that would be released to the public and when, and they said they would be able to get it, you know, very quickly, you know, they could just basically put it together and have, and we could be able to share that with the public. And so I just want to reiterate that request, that we share that, the data, the results from the polling.
Yeah, and I think we are also planning on, in the next newsletter, putting that information in the next newsletter, so we'll be getting that information out and on our website also.
Laurie, are you talking about the, the polling from the 26 voters? The 26 blue?
From the ones, from whoever was in the audience, yeah, there was some data collected at that session. Obviously, it wasn't everybody.
Right, and I, and I think what we're, as I recall, the, what will be in the newsletter is kind of a recital of that, but then also asking people to respond in the newsletter in a survey of, you know, thoughts that they have along those lines, so that you can get a more robust number than just the 26. So it just gives individuals another opportunity to participate.
One comment that I would like to make, and I know this isn't really a discussion item at this point, but, you know, I, I wasn't attend, in attendance in person, but I did watch the study session and the presentation on, on, live on television, and while they kept talking about different size of units, they kept showing pictures of two stories and saying, well, this isn't feasible, but these are the pictures we have. And I think that in the future, we need to have realistic drawings of conceptual plans so that people can see what the, the possibilities might look like.
Yeah, I agree with you, Terry. And Clay, the consultants are planning to provide some kind of software that, that shows, okay, here's the scene with three stories, and then they can manipulate and show a scene with four stories or two stories, and, you know, we're, you know, interactive.
Yeah. I just got a note from staff that the polling results are on the website now.
Good. Can I have a, I have a quick follow-up question on that. I had met with MIG, they had interviewed me as one of the last stakeholder interviews, and I had asked them, you know, 26, 26 people is a relatively small sample size. So I said, you know, what are we going to be doing in terms of continuing to engage the community, and how can we get this same sort of survey out to them? And they said that it wasn't a survey through, Survey Monkey wasn't going to be compatible with the city's website or with Town Hall or what have you, so it sounds like there is a solution that you guys came up with to include something in the newsletter. So are we going to do anything to further notify citizens, aside from just the newsletter, about this existing?
How about if I get back to you all tomorrow with a more robust response in terms of what the plan is?
Okay.
I, I just don't want to shoot from the hip.
Right, okay, thanks.
No, they don't want to do that. Okay. So next up is, is Fay Conway?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Laurie. Everybody, Madison, congratulations on your assignment.
Thank you.
Anyway, I don't normally.
You went by speaking into the mic.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
I don't normally come to these meetings, so I'm kind of a little bit.
You can pull it down.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I guess some of you are aware, anyway, what this is about, and I, and it's about a stop sign possibly at Thomas Avenue at the crest of the hill, and opposite side of the road is Anis Road, and it's, we have to slow cars down, basically. But can I give you this, this?
Please.
Did you want to help me? Candida, you want to help me? Pass this out to them, please. One each, and then also down the road that way. Please?
Okay.
Okay.
You start reading.
Okay.
Is this the email that you sent to the council?
Yes. Yes. So they, they did say they'll refer it to, Karen was going to, Karen was going to look at it also, so I haven't met Karen yet, but that's the email in black and white, so you can see, it's so easy. Basically, please, I'll just go from this, please consider a temporary stop sign as cars approach the crest of the hill from both directions of San Bruno Avenue at Thomas Avenue at Anis Road at a pedestrian intersection for the following reasons. Number one, fast approaching cars, visibility is impaired. So of course, there's a slower reaction time to avoid collision when cars are pulling onto San Bruno Avenue when approaching from Thomas Avenue. Residents are also crossing, so residents actually have to run, do not walk. Within the past year, there was an accident, and as I understand, four cars were hit coming from the crest of the San Bruno, San Bruno Avenue, even though the driver was, was intoxicated. And they, ultimately, she was, I think she was, I talked to Officer Commander Bob about it, too, and got the police report. She did hit four cars. The first car overturned, completely upside down, hit a second car, it hit, it bounced off of the second car, it hit a third car, and when it hit the fourth car, it was right in front of 748 San Bruno Avenue. Charles Colletti lives there, who's also called Rip. And my niece Candida and Raquel were both on San Bruno Avenue when it happened, and they heard crash, boom, bang. And I talked to the owner, and he also said the same thing. It sounded like it was devastating. But luckily, nobody was hurt other than the driver who was intoxicated, and my niece and my daughter came out to the front. That car was actually on the opposite side of the road already. So that was my first part with fast approaching cars. I'm just going to go through this real quick. Pedestrian danger at risk of San Bruno Avenue residents crossing. Number three, there is a bus stop at the top of Thomas Avenue, and there's a danger when crossing over, walking from, to and from the corner bus stop. Number four, school crossing. Only two blocks away is the Brisbane Elementary School, and cars need to slow down as kids are coming home from school, and I saw risk getting struck as far down as San Bruno Avenue close to Glen Parkway. And a Thomas Avenue stop sign will slow down drivers. This is like a kid's zone, a kid crossing. Number five, there's an Anis Road danger, and visibility is also impaired from both directions, and I experienced the caution that you, that's required every time you cross that. And number six, approaching at dusk, you're temporarily blinded on a sunny day and while driving to Brisbane when approaching the crest, some surprise, the sun will be in your eye. And what if a kid was crossing for those two seconds? And number seven, there is a construction zone. And number eight, when exiting Brisbane at the crest, cars coasting downhill tends to speed up unless your foot is on the brakes. Of course, you know, we're fine, we're mature drivers, but you might have an 18-year-old, which actually happened, had an accident in the embankment, and this was 16 years ago. The car was disabled, and at the time, Officer, who is now chief today, Lisa Macias, was able to escort my 18-year-old stepson and his two-month-old little brother, and this was 16 years ago. So I wanted to just encourage this stop sign to slow people down for your teenagers who may cross that same intersection, and they'll slow down, and it could be anybody's teenager. Number nine, and we're almost coming to the end, when cars pull out of Tulare Street from left, to turn left uphill, there is poor visibility of downhill sometimes when the cars are approaching fast, when cars are parked along San Bruno Avenue. As, as well as number 10, when you're coming out of the driveways of 733 and 737 San Bruno Avenue, there's a danger motorists do have to slow down when you're backing out of those driveways. And I, like I said, I drive here six times a day, and I, I know for the last 16 years, and it's close to my heart now, because I go to Thomas Avenue all the time now, because my daughter's playing basketball for the first time, and did a real good job, she scored four points, and her two free throws she scored, but I'm picking up, I'm picking up girls in basketball now on Thomas Avenue, so it's close to my heart now, and it's actually an urgency now, because I see the girls crossing the street sometimes, and, oh my God, we can avoid a very serious situation. That's it.
All right, thanks.
And I thank you.
Yeah, I, I got your email and forwarded it to the city manager, so we did discuss it.
Okay, thanks.
I don't know if my mic is on, if they can hear me. And that's actually an engineering solution that our city engineer is looking at. Clay, have you got any updates on that, or?
Thank you.
Yeah, there, there's probably about four different issues around town that have kind of come up over the last several months, and the engineering department is looking at each one of those. Will develop options. My thought is to bring it through the council facilities subcommittee, since this is all engineering, and all, and all these are going to be budgetary issues, depending on, you know, what you end up doing, and then, you know, be timely for discussion when we get to the budget this year.
Okay. Great. I appreciate it.
Would it also be possible for the Complete Streets to look at it? Because I know they've been involved with the school crossing and the safety areas, so.
Yeah, I.
Might be, once the engineers looked at it, it might be.
That's where a lot of confusion's coming in, Terry, is, you know, and I, and I need to talk to one of the committee members, you know, that I owe a phone call, but Clay and I have discussed this, and there's two different things, because Complete Streets is, is a rather new committee, and we've never really kind of sat down on, on what really is maybe under their responsibility. In this case, when there's like, you know, definite safety issues that, that come up like, like this, and there's one on Bayshore Boulevard, and a, a couple that were brought up, I think at our last meeting or two meetings ago, and those are engineering, require engineering solutions, and if it goes through the Complete Streets, they don't have the engineering expertise as a committee to analyze that, so it kind of like slows the process up. This is something that staff can deal with on an engineering level, and it's, could be much more expeditious, I guess you could say, to that.
I, I was just making the comment, because I, I do think that engineering needs to look at it to see what's feasible and what's not.
Right.
But there's also, you know, some of these concerns that are brought on this particular issue could be moving a bus stop, or changing where the pedestrian crossing is, or making it a left turn, right turn only. You know, there's a lot of other things that can work in conjunction with engineering.
Yeah.
So.
And, you know, and that, you know, really needs to be communicated to the Complete Streets, so we're, we're kind of going through this process now, I think, of, of finding our feet, so to speak, because there's been a little bit of discord on, you know, what, what they should be working on, and, you know, what, you know, and what really engineering should be working on, so.
Yeah. And, you know, I read Randy's response, and I think he's, he's doing the right thing. You know, you need to analyze it properly.
Mm-hmm.
You don't want to, you know, try and fix one problem with creating another problem. And so doing, you know, but this has been a, a major issue for a long time, and I'm glad that you brought it to our attention, and, and so we're going to get on it and come up with, with, you know, the proper recommendation to make that intersection safer in terms of today.
Right. It's definitely, like, even just today, when I picked up my daughter, when I picked up my daughter from basketball, the mom, one of the moms that were with us, she said when she drives her car, and she's a little person, and she drives a little car, she's coming into town over Thomas Avenue, and she's short like this, and she, she can't see over it. She can't see over it, and, and that would be a perfect stop sign, or bumps.
We'll see. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next up, Mal, you want, oh, okay, all right, let me get through these other folks first, since you've already come up to speak, Michelle. Malcolm Barnes?
I can speak to you on that. I don't, I don't.
Oh, that's right, you're right, it is on the agenda. Okay, so now you're good, Michelle.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. At the last council meeting, during oral communications, I made a very clear request that the city of Brisbane present our RENA obligations, regional housing needs authority obligations that we have, especially before we go any further with soliciting public commentary on the Parkside Plan, because as I understand it right now, our RENA obligation is 293 units, and of that, 169 are designated as very low income, and another huge chunk is designated as low income. Only 30 units are designated at market rate, and the restrictions on very low-income housing, from what I've read, are not based on people's actual incomes, because that is too difficult to administer. But apparently, it's based on a level of density dictated by the state of California, which means that the density level is in excess of 20 units per acre, but I don't know exactly where we fall for the very low-income units in Brisbane. And I think that people need to really understand this and be privy to what that means in terms of how many units have to be crammed in to X number of space in order to qualify to meet our legally obligated regional housing needs numbers that were, I think, very poorly assigned to the city of Brisbane. And I think people need to know that before they decide they want, oh, mixed-use, or three-story, or two-story, or outside parking, or inside parking, because we are a very small town with very limited space left available for any type of development of this nature. And it was my understanding, that's why Parkside Plan got its start when it was shoved into the budget as part of our RENA obligations, regional housing needs authority obligation. And that has been totally obfuscated or hidden in this. when it was shoved into the budget as part of our RENA obligations, regional housing needs authority obligation. And that has been totally obfuscated or hidden in this whole Parkside Plan discussion. And I think that it really needs to be made very clear to the people of Brisbane before they're invited to express their opinion about what they want. They need to understand first what we are obligated to do before being asked to make a decision of whether they want mixed use, two story, three story, four story or six story buildings at the base of Brisbane. And so in order for clarity and visibility and transparency, I really am asking you to provide that information to the citizens before you solicit any more opinions about what people want in Parkside Plan. Because people need to know what we are obligated to do before they decide what they want. And I think that's a very important distinction that you have not made clear to the people of Brisbane. Thank you.
All right, thank you in regards to that. Clay, you know, at the workshop, I know that was one of the goals. It talked about the RENA numbers and, you know, the requirements, didn't it?
I believe so. I don't want to be quoted on that, although I was there.
I don't remember that.
Not that I heard.
I was there, I listened to it and I didn't hear.
We didn't know, it was not discussed.
All right, you know, obviously, we need to do a better job with, you know, communicating that. So, you know, and we did, we have talked about it a lot during our housing element. But then, you know, tying it to Parkside, we definitely need to do that because that's part of the major reasons why we're doing the Parkside Plan.
I do have, I've got a staff person who's really on top of this tonight. So she's just told me that we are, the regional housing needs allocation article will be in the Star coming up in this upcoming month.
Can we also get that in a link to that in the newsletter or some other form of online communication to?
Well, that's all, all online.
Okay, good.
I mean, I'm probably coming at it from a slightly different perspective than Michelle. But, you know, the planning process for Parkside and the housing allocation are two different things. They are not the same thing. One fits within one, you know, and perhaps the housing needs thing kind of was the instigator and the starter of this, but they are really different.
All right, yeah, you know, and every month, you know, the mayor does the article in the luminary. And that's going to be the subject matter that I'll write. And I'm going to take what you have to say, Michelle, to heart and really try and clarify, you know, those numbers and why we're, you know, why the council moved forward with the Parkside Plan.
And perhaps clearly illustrate what that level of density looks like.
All right, thank you. Okay, so now we're done with the oral communications. Move on to the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. All right, new business. Consider awarding the construction contract for the Brisbane Community Skate Park Project to Spawn Ranch Skate Parks for three hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. Authorize the city manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Approve a supplemental appropriation of five thousand dollars from the capital facilities fund. And provide direction to staff regarding whether to include the additive alternate quarter pipe transition in the contract for the bid amount of sixteen thousand, seventy-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. All right, staff report, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Staff put this project out to bid in January, opened bids on February second and received one bid from Spawn Ranch Skate Parks in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. The original construction contract estimate was, the complete construction contract estimate was three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, forty thousand of which is estimated to be completed by in-kind donations, which are already underway at the skate park. That leaves remaining approximately five thousand dollars beyond what was estimated and budgeted for the base contract. So the first part of the item is approval of award of the contract to Spawn Ranch for three hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. The second part is to consider whether to add to the contract the quarter pipe transition that we had bid as an additive alternate. Last time, we talked about what that was and where it was, and I hadn't diagrammed it very well. So in this staff report, we've included at the end the concept plan, a three D concept plan and a mark where that quarter pipe would be positioned and a photo that kind of shows hopefully how it functions at the end. It would allow for a more continuous flow through the skate park and eliminate a dead end where you have to stop and reset and then move on to another element or another action in the skate park. So that's, that's completely at the council's discretion whether to include that or not include that. I was asked to talk about the previous, the design fees and the expense on professional services up till now. Council budgeted thirty thousand dollars from the general fund and from the recreation facilities fund, of which the consultant design fees were fourteen thousand dollars. The survey was a thousand dollars and the geotechnical fees were seven thousand, five hundred dollars. There's a small remainder in there that is needed for continuing geotechnical observation of the construction and the like. Other questions?
All right, any questions for Karen?
I have one, Karen. I know there was some additional fundraising for the brick, is that included in here?
There, yes, there was another fundraising push after the first of, or towards the end of the year and up until recently. And they raised another four thousand dollars. Some of that is going towards supplying those bricks. But, you know, yes, it is counted towards revenue.
So that's included, huh? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madison?
I have a question for staff. Is it common to get just one bid on a project? Is that a trick question?
No, it's inconsistent all the time. It was interesting, we did get two other skate park particular construction companies that took out plans. And we got two other general contractors that might have considered using a skate park specialty subcontractor. But then we only got the one bid and I didn't follow up and speak to them. There aren't, there aren't any in the local area. There's maybe one contractor in Santa Cruz, but the rest were out of state and further away. So some of it might be that other work comes along that's more geographically, you know, desirable to them. I'm not really.
My only concern is that I would think it would be good to be able to compare what the going rate of skate park construction amount looks like and have some options in terms of people that, contractors that we can choose from. You know, like I think when you, I, the first thing that comes to mind is you get medical or if you're building a house or something, you get a second opinion because you want to be able to compare, you know, what sounds, what sounds good and what sounds reasonable. So I just, because I have no background knowledge on this. I mean, does this bid, it sounds like it's a little bit higher than what we had originally estimated. But do you, do you feel like it is so competitive? Or, you know, I just don't want to be, I want us to have as many options as possible. So I just don't want to select something that could end up being higher than what, you know, some other contractors might bid, so.
Well, there's two things to think about. One is there's not an exact fixed.
Right.
You would think there's a fixed cost to build something. And if you did do all of the work in a time and materials basis and paid by the hour, you might have one cost, but you've got what a contractor is willing to do the work for and come to the area and house their laborers and all of that. And the other part is that I did look at comparable, when the design was underway, I looked at comparable projects in the area. There's, there was a skate park built in Half Moon Bay. There were some built in San Francisco. There's one built in Santa Cruz also. And looked at their specs and their construction costs. And they're in the same per square footage, they're in the same range. Recent projects.
I was just curious, why, why did you not follow up with the other people who are interested? Was it that, that they were out of state and you thought that that would probably be a higher bid? Or that this, this company was really excellent and?
Well, we contacted all of the companies that do this type of work that are, that were basically in the Western US. We had a list and there are about a dozen of them. And we contacted all of them and told them that our project was out to bid. But once the bids closed and they didn't submit one, we would have to throw them all out and redo the whole process if we wanted to try again to get more bids. So my comment about not calling them was, they decided not to bid for whatever their reasons were. And I just didn't particularly follow up what their reasons were.
As do I, okay. That was my only question. That was my only question, thanks.
I did have a couple of questions. So on this, we are looking at three hundred and forty thousand dollars so far that for the thirty thousand plus the three hundred and ten thousand. And while the, the cost of construction's gone up, our in-kind donations have gone up. And one of the things that I had a question on is that one of the reasons we asked for community fundraising was because they, the community wanted additional amenities, the water fountain, powder coating, fencing, more screening. Are those costs inclusive? Because we did not receive a copy of the Spawn Ranch bid. So is this two hundred and ten thousand turnkey?
It's three hundred and nine.
I mean, three hundred and nine, three hundred and ten.
Three hundred and ten, yes, that's everything except the in-kind donation. So that includes you, we need five thousand more, but we didn't fund three hundred and five to this point. You funded two hundred and forty-five, that's, and that was in the prior staff report. And I know the numbers like are, I'm not trying to make it appear like it's a shell game. We funded two hundred and forty-five thousand. We had five thousand from the Tony Hawk grant. And the community fundraised about forty thousand. And then you did a supplemental appropriation for twenty-one based on the estimate at the time that we put it out to bid. And then these bids came in, the five thousand higher.
So, so far, we've funded two forty-five plus thirty for the design.
Yeah, and I was not, I was particularly talking about construction and not.
It's, it's a package, it's how much is this skate park costing?
Sure.
Brisbane, the city of Brisbane, I'm not talking about the in-kind. So we have the three hundred and ten thousand, we have thirty thousand, well, two forty-five, thirty thousand. And then another five thousand. And then we're asking for another sixteen thousand.
There was another twenty thousand, twenty-one?
Approximately, I'm using round numbers just to not confuse it.
Yes, that's, yes.
And then the community is contributing approximately forty thousand or seventy-four thousand, depending on how you look at the numbers. So really, the total price of this has two figures, the amount the city's paying and the total cost of the project. And the total cost of the project, if we were to include that sixteen oh seventy-seven, is, my math is fuzzy because these numbers appear fuzzy. So we're looking at a skate park that is costing?
Oh, but you're asking me?
Yeah, I'm asking a question. I'm leaving it sort of open.
Like how much are we paying and how much is the total?
How much is the project? Is this a three hundred and fifty thousand project? Is this a five hundred thousand project?
Maybe Stuart can respond to that.
I'll, I'll do my best, hopefully Karen will help me. So the project, the base project itself, the construction cost of the base project is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It cost us approximately thirty thousand dollars in the design. So from that perspective, there's three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the base project. And you're also being asked tonight for a sixteen thousand dollar addition to that, three hundred and eighty, so making a three hundred and ninety-six thousand. And that would include the quarter pipe, if you do all of that. That was funded by, as you said, Councilmember Connell. Two hundred and forty-five thousand was the original capital budget, which was a combination of different funds that we approved at the time of the budget. There was the twenty-one thousand that you approved as a supplemental appropriation, which would bring the total amount that the city funded directly for the capital project portion to two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six thousand. We approved the thirty thousand before, so that'd be two hundred and ninety-six thousand. Tonight, you're being asked for another twenty-one thousand to include the quarter pipe. So two hundred and ninety-six plus twenty-one would be three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. We also have received grants of approximately seventy-fourth, or donations of approximately seventy-four thousand dollars and a grant of five thousand to fund all that. So we would have donations and grants of eighty thousand approximately and about three hundred and twenty thousand. So about a fifth of the project is funded through grants and donations and eighty percent is funded through city funds.
So that would bring us to three hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
About approximately around four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand.
Is that?
That, that's round numbers and I appreciate the round numbers because I think it's important to know, you know, where we started at two hundred and forty-five thousand and what we end up with. And right now, on C CAG, and I can't go into details, we're dealing with a construction project that after the fact had a very large, and this is completely after the fact, with no change orders, no known reason for it. We're having a project that has multi double-digit request for cost overruns. And it, it turns out that there's some issues with bidding processes that even if you submit a bid, if you end up doing more work, you get paid for it sort of regardless, if the claim has merit. So my concern is, is that because we didn't, I didn't see the Spawn Ranch contract, it wasn't attached to anything, that we're going to be looking at adding things on as we go, as we find things we want and we need and that come up. And this is going to keep ballooning.
Maybe, I want to jump in here.
Okay.
Because I think that's, the example you're talking about with C CAG is very different than what we're talking about.
It is very different, I just know it, it can happen.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't think, I don't think that's going to happen in this kind of situation. The difference, the, the, the difference in terms of budgeted cost over time on this project has been the function of, you know, not knowing exactly what you want to build. And that's the same as, you know, when you build a house, you know, and you're not quite sure what, you know, how many rooms you want and what kind of fixtures you want. And so we've gone through that very iterative process and a very community focused process. And that has driven a lot of the additional costs and addition, or, you know, from what we originally thought. Because the original question really to skateboard park people was, well, we've got this size, you know, area and we want to do a skateboard park, you know, how much you think? And so you don't really know too much about the detail. So that's always going to happen, you know, as you go through a process of really defining what, what the project is. Now, in terms of tonight, you know, you have a decision of whether or not you want to do that additional sixteen thousand dollars. And that's really kind of the decision you have at this point. In terms of the, the contract, you know, one of the things that will drive the C CAG example is when you get into a project and you don't know, you know, what you're, you know, what's underground. Give you an example in this building, when we did the remodel years ago. And, and, you know, Randy always tells a story of you start peeling back the walls and start finding things that are, you have to deal with that weren't known up until that point in time. So that can happen. In this particular case, the geotech work has already been done. We've got a real good handle on what the project is. So I don't think there's going to be any major surprises. You know, and you can't give you a hundred percent on that. But I'm pretty, for, for, for pretty good about that we've, we know what the project is now. We know what the site is. And we've dealt with all those kinds of issues up to this point. So I don't think we're going to have that, that sort of issue. So I know, I hope that kind of helps because I think when we get to the, to the library project, it's the same sort of thing, is that. it's the same sort of thing is that, you know, you you start off with saying, I want to build a library that's seven thousand square feet. And then you start thinking about, okay, what what's everything that you want to be in there? And that can start defining a little bit more of what the cost is going to be. So that that really happens a lot on, um, you know, facilities that have quite a real kind of significant public use. Um, unlike a water or sewer system or, you know, lines underneath the ground where, you know, nobody really comments on that, right? And and there's kind of an engineering standard you build to. But these things are more about what the pu- pu- public wants and what the community wants. And that's what often drives different costs, uh, estimates and factors.
So the the item two, the recommendation for sixteen thousand seventy-seven dollars, is that a bid that is support submitted by Spawn Ranch to include?
Yeah, that's their cost. Yes.
Okay.
I do have some questions when you're done. Okay. So, um, first question is, since this is our only bid and it was, we don't really have anything to compare it to, but it's, you know, Spawn Ranch is the designer and would be the the builder. Would there be any cost savings because it's the same company? You know, they'd be looking at their own plans and you think it would, you know, they're already familiar with the site. And would that, you know, we we don't have anything to compare it to, but if we had received another bid, would you, would you expect it to be less expensive from the company if it, in this case, it's from the company that designed it?
I'm not sure because this um, this design allowed for the elements, the above-ground features like the quarter pipe and the half pipe to be precast off-site and brought in and installed.
Okay.
Or to be built on-site. And they're one of the people that does a precast type of option and I'm not sure how many of the other ones do that. So it may be more, it may be less, maybe it's cheaper to do it that way. I'm not completely familiar. But they've bid what they've bid, so there's not there aren't, there shouldn't be additional design fees related to this work, but.
Okay. And then the second question is, in the, um, one of the attachments for this skate park construction costs and funding as of twelve-nine two thousand and fifteen, it says the removal of the skate spot was, I'm sorry, the quarter pipe was noted there as thirty thousand dollars and here it's sixteen thousand. So can you explain that discrepancy?
Yeah, sure. On twelve-nine, that's what the estimate was to add the quarter pipe onto the project.
So the actual cost now is less?
So, you know, the contractor, the bidder has bid less than that, yes.
Okay.
Engineering estimate.
Okay, great.
Any other questions for staff? I just had a, just a quick couple. So Stuart, in that thirty thousand initial exploration part of the skateboard park plan, wasn't some of that money donated from leftovers from the playground?
Um, all, all, all the money that shows for the donor brick donation, T-shirt and car show donations, that's all including that money that was.
What about prior to, you know, the the Mothers of Brisbane had raised money for the playground equipment? And then, uh, they raised more than what was needed and so didn't that money then go into? Did it go just into the general fund or did it go in a little?
There was, there was seven thousand dollars left over. Karen whispered in my ear. There was seven thousand dollars that was left over from the playground. Where that money came from, I cannot say because all of the playground money was put into a large pot. And at the end of the day, there was seven thousand dollars left over for the development of, for the building of the playground. That seven, that seven thousand did go into the design. That seven thousand could have been used for a different project if council decided.
Okay. But that 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 seven thousand could have been part of the thirty thousand that was spent.
It was part of the thirty thousand that was spent. But I can't tell you that it was from a specific fundraising event of specific donor, specific anything.
Yes. Okay. No, we know that. All right. Thanks, Stuart. And then the drinking fountain, that is part of the, um, plan?
Yes.
Drinking fountain out there?
Yeah, sorry to not be clear. The the community upgrades requested the, there's a vinyl clad fence and the water fountain are still included in them.
Okay, great. And then, um, the green space around the skate park along, um, Old County Road and and, um, and Park Lane. I thought we were going to bring the the skate park all the way to the edge to maximize the the size of the skate park, but I still see it there and are we planning to do that?
This concept is pretty close to what's being built, so it is because that's, that alignment isn't perpendicular between Old County and Park Lane. It's, it's touching at one point and it would be, you know, this is the, the designer put this together, but you'd have stuff that was offset in kind of a strange way if you took all that space. They, they made a rectangle basically out of a non-rectangular
Okay.
footprint. And the thought was that because it's kind of a sterile site asphalt, concrete sidewalk and then a concrete skate park, that having a little bit of green and maybe some grasses and low maintenance green outside of the fence might soften the look a little bit.
Sure. No, that makes sense. All right. I guess hopefully we can get some, some drought tolerant, hardy plants that
Of course, yeah.
will make it look nice and provide that contrast. I think that would be good. All right. So I know we have a member of the public would like to speak. Malcolm.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I would like to suggest a possible name for the skate park. My name is Malcolm Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident. The name I would like to suggest reflects the SF tradition of mile houses. SF City Hall is mile zero. There's a four-mile house on Third Street, a five-mile house on San Bruno Avenue and a seven-mile house on Ashore Boulevard in Brisbane. In keeping with this tradition, we should name the skate park, uh, Eight Mile because it is roughly eight miles from SF City Hall and serves as a meeting place for skaters, much like the mile houses did for travelers. Eight Mile also has a modern reference to popular rap artist Eminem, which a lot of the skaters have listened to in the past. Furthermore, Eight Mile would be the perfect name for the skate park that follows a peninsula tradition as well as keeping in touch with the modern day. I hope you vote to approve the skate park. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Anybody else out in the audience who'd like to speak regarding skate park? Okay. All right, uh, council discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to move forward with it, uh, with the, uh, transition, the quarter pipe transition to, uh, go ahead and appropriate the additional twenty-one thousand dollars. So I, I, uh, I think, uh, engineering estimate came in just a little under, or the estimate. The proposal came in about five thousand dollars more than the engineer's estimate, so it was pretty close. So, uh, I'm not concerned with that and I think the additional, uh, thing would really enhance it. And I think that, you know, now's an opportune time to go ahead and do it and for that price, so for the sixteen thousand.
Laura?
Yeah, I agree with Clark. I, you know, I think that the community has really, um, done a great job with the fundraising, raising you know, almost, I guess, eighty-four thousand dollars, uh, including the Tony Hawk grant and, you know, that that's a fifth of the cost. So I think that's pretty significant. Um, and I think that that additional quarter pipe would, would enhance the feature. So, you know, it's going to last for hopefully a long time. Um, and so it's kind of an investment in our community. So I'd be in favor of approving this.
I, I think that personally, I, I think that it's a large expense for a project that the community's shown that they are in favor of. Or at least a group of the community and the Mothers of Brisbane have done a great job in fundraising. But I, I do think that, you know, originally we set a budget on this and we looked at it and prices have gone up and the costs have gone up. And something that we thought was going to be, you know, two hundred and fifty is four thousand. It sounded as if that was the recommendation to take out the quarter pipe and and the skate spot because they were beyond our budgetary, um, intentions to begin with. So I personally would be more in favor of of doing the project as we've got it listed here and the costs that we've got listed on the original or the revised bid. But that's my personal opinion.
All right. Madison?
Hey. Um, I understand where Terry's coming from and, you know, it's important when we look at our finances to, um, try and be as conservative as possible when possible. However, I, I am a believer in if you're going to do something, um, you should do it right. And, um, and do it to the best of your abilities. And I think in the previous discussions about the quarter, the quarter pipe, we were talking about how it, it's almost, um, a safety issue not to have it because the way that you end, it's not a flow in terms of when you're skating. The quarter pipe would allow you to continue moving throughout the park versus having to come to an abrupt abrupt stop and change. And so if, looking at sixteen thousand in terms of the overall amount that we would be spending, you know, it, it doesn't seem too considerable of an addition, in my opinion. Um, and also just in thinking about a safety concern, I would want this to be as safe as possible. And also, you know, I just think that, um, if we can add more to the park, then, you know, that would, that would be great. So, um, I say, you know, go for quality and and make sure that it is done right. And, um, I'm in favor of adding the quarter pipe transition.
Yeah, no, I'm in agreement with that as well. You know, when you have, uh, just one bid, it's, uh, you know, you don't like seeing that. But when you, when you understand that the the skate park is small compared to other skate parks and and that this is a specialty type of construction project, there's not a lot of contractors out there. Yeah, you know, there, it's going to be tough to get those bids. And, but I'm confident about Spawn Ranch. Uh, they have an excellent reputation and we've seen their work. Uh, and they've worked really well with our community to flush out the vision that the skaters would like to see. And so I agree, the extra money is is small, uh, and, you know, for that additional added feature. And I, and I agree with you, uh, Madison, about the safety aspect of it. So, uh, with that, I will, Clark?
If I could, I, I would just like to acknowledge to, uh, Malcolm Barnes with your creativity on your name of that. I think that's, okay. Shouldn't, shouldn't have pointed. Giving you kudos, man. But yeah, I, I, I like the creativity, but I, I don't think that's something we're going to decide with this, uh, uh, right at this point. But I would be proud to make the, uh, motion to have the mayor sign a contract with, um, Spawn Ranch in the amount of, well, the approved bid with with a supplemental appropriation of twenty-one thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. And, uh, yeah, and this is also a special thanks to all the folks who helped raise money, especially the Mothers of Brisbane and Jennifer Buske.
And as for the naming, I, I think, you know, I hadn't really thought about that, but maybe, you know, I'd welcome community input on, how we should have it named or, you know, any, any suggestions on the process or what the name should be. I think, you know, same thing with the library. I've heard some suggestions for that, so.
Voting system.
I think the name is important.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you to Michael Barnes too for the fun fundraising on the T-shirts and stuff, Michael. I know he's been out there doing that, so thank you.
All right. So moving on to the second item under new business. Consider items related to new state laws governing medical marijuana-related businesses. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Last fall, the state legislature passed the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. The act is originally enacted, consists of three separate pieces of of legislation governing the licensing and control of medical marijuana-related businesses in the state. With certain limitation, the act generally preserves and protects cities' local licensing practices, zoning ordinances and police power. Among other things, the act establishes a dual licensing structure that requires both a state license and any local license or permit required by local ordinance. Many anticipate a rapid growth in marijuana-related businesses once the state begins issuing licenses for such businesses. Brisbane, like other cities statewide, may wish to consider imposing local restrictions on such businesses within the broad latitude that cities retain to regulate in this area. Uh, in January, um, of this year, the Health and Safety Committee met to discuss the new state laws pertaining to medical marijuana and to consider new local regulations in this area. The committee made a number of recommendations to the council. First, the committee recommends that the council adopt a resolution to confirm that under state law, the state may not issue a license to cultivate medical marijuana in Brisbane. Under the new state law, a state may not issue a license to cultivate medical marijuana in any city that bans cultiv- cultivation within its jurisdiction. As originally enacted, there was a March first, two thousand and sixteen deadline for cities to have a regulation in place. Failure to meet that March first, two thousand and sixteen deadline created a strong argument that the city was then prevented in the future from regulating commercial cultivation of medical marijuana. Earlier this month, the legislature enacted an emergency measure that lifted that March first deadline. That measure took effect the beginning of February, so, um, cities statewide no longer have to rush to get something on their books by March first to avoid a preemption argument. Nevertheless, um, staff recommends that, um, the council go ahead and follow the recommended course of action from the League of Cities for cities like Brisbane that currently ban commercial cultivation based on, um, permissive zoning principles. Under a permissive zoning principle, a city may ban a use if it is not specifically listed in its zoning ordinance. Brisbane has a permissive zoning ordinance and there is nothing in the zoning ordinance that would permit uh, commercial cultivation of medical marijuana. So based on permissive zoning principles, your zoning ordinance, as currently written, bans commercial cultivation. The League of Cities recommends that to make clear to the state and to others who may seek a permit to, um, engage in commercial cultivation of medical marijuana once the state starts issuing licenses. That cities like Brisbane that that rely on, um, permissive zoning principles pass a resolution to make clear that under state law, a state license may not be issued to cultivate medical marijuana in Brisbane. So staff is recommending that you go ahead and pass that resolution. That resolution is merely a statement of what the current law is. The, um, council would, of course, be free to change that regulation in the future should it decide to do so. There is no urgency to do so by March first, the way there was several weeks ago. But we recommend that you go ahead and pass the resolution so that, um, it's clear to everyone that at least as of now, commercial cultivation is banned in Brisbane. And so you don't end up in a situation where someone, some business gets a license to cultivate in Brisbane. So that is the, the first item, um, that the committee made a recommendation about. The second item is that the committee, the question then, then, um, arose then, would is The second item is that the committee, the question then arose then, would, is commercial cultivation something that the council would like to consider in the future by changing the zoning ordinance? And the committee makes a recommendation that the council not amend the city's zoning ordinance to allow commercial cultivation in Brisbane. The next recommendation the committee made is whether to allow cultivation for personal use in Brisbane. State law permits cultivation of marijuana for personal medical use so long as the cultivation occurs within a certain square foot area. The cultivator for personal use may be the patient with a state-issued license, I'm sorry, with a state-issued card for medical marijuana, or the primary caregiver for up to five such patients. Those engaged in cultivation for personal medicinal use would not need a license from the state. The state is only licensing businesses. But someone who is cultivating more than the amount that state allows in terms of the square footage would be considered to be a commercial cultivator and would then need a license. The new state laws do not restrict the authorities of cities to ban or further restrict personal cultivation of medical marijuana within their jurisdiction if they so choose. And although in Brisbane, commercial cultivation of medical marijuana is banned by your zoning ordinance, Brisbane does not currently ban cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use. So, the question before you is whether or not to follow the recommendation of the committee to direct staff to initiate a zoning text amendment process before the planning commission to consider prohibiting cultivation of medical marijuana, I'm sorry, cultivation of marijuana for personal use. The next recommendation the committee made pertains to delivery services of medical marijuana. Under the new state law, a medical marijuana dispensary may obtain a separate state license to deliver medical marijuana products to a patient, a primary caregiver, or to testing facilities. The act permits only licensed dispensaries to engage in those kinds of delivery services. So, common carriers like UPS or FedEx would not be able to deliver medical marijuana. And the act provides that the newly-created Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation will adopt, in the future, regulations that govern delivery services. At the moment, there are no regulations in place. The act explicitly provides that cities retain the authority to ban or restrict delivery of medical marijuana in their jurisdictions, but cities must do so, if they're going to do so expressly. You can't rely on permissive zoning principles in order to ban delivery of medical marijuana. And the act does not permit cities to restrict simply the use of public streets to deliver medical marijuana from a business outside of the jurisdiction to a location outside of the jurisdiction. So, the only ban that the city would be able to do is to restrict businesses operating in Brisbane from being a delivery service or delivering to locations in Brisbane, but use of the public streets is not something that can be regulated. To accomplish, the committee, based on the police chief recommendation, recommends that the council adopt an ordinance banning all marijuana deliveries to or from any Brisbane location. I understand from the police chief that the chief is concerned that we don't know what criminal activity, if any, will be associated with medical marijuana deliveries and because the state has yet to adopt the regulations that will ultimately govern these businesses, at this point, we really don't know whether having deliveries within the city will increase crime rates or not. Should the council wish to ban deliveries in the city, staff recommends the council direct staff to draft an ordinance amending the city's business regulation provisions to prohibit the delivery of medical marijuana or marijuana products as a business in the city. The committee also recommends that the council direct staff to initiate a zoning text amendment process before the planning commission to consider expressly banning marijuana dispensaries in every zone. Although your zoning ordinance does not currently contain an express prohibition against marijuana dispensaries, we interpret the zoning ordinance to prohibit such businesses in every zone based on permissive zoning principles. However, an argument could be made that medical marijuana dispensaries are similar in character or nature to retail uses that are permitted. And therefore, staff's interpretation could be challenged, although we believe that the city would ultimately prevail against such a challenge. The city might be required to devote considerable resources in terms of staff time or legal fees in the process. Accordingly, if the committee wants to continue to ban marijuana dispensaries, we do recommend that the council direct staff to initiate a zoning text amendment to make that ban express, to avoid any argument that could be raised in the future. And then, the committee also recommended that the council direct the staff to initiate a zoning text amendment process before the planning commission to consider banning other types of marijuana-related businesses in every zone. There are a variety of other types of businesses that may seek to establish themselves in Brisbane once the state starts issuing licenses. Such businesses include those engaged in research and development, manufacturing, processing, warehousing, testing, distributing, and transporting of marijuana or marijuana products. Under the city's current zoning ordinance, those businesses would be permitted to operate in any zone that permits, as a matter of right, the same types of businesses and the same types of land uses related to other types of products and substances. So, if research and development is allowed, the fact that this is research and development of marijuana products wouldn't make a difference unless you express that ban or that restriction in your zoning ordinance. The committee recommends that council direct staff to initiate a zoning text amendment process before the planning commission to explore options to ban these types of businesses in Brisbane. Staff recommends that, to the extent the council wants to permit any of the types of businesses that we've discussed, either as a permitted or conditional use, that council direct staff to draft an ordinance requiring any such businesses to obtain a license from the city to operate in Brisbane. In terms of the timing, now that the March first deadline is gone, the timing consideration that is really trying to make sure that whatever new regulations you have in place are in place before the state starts issuing licenses to avoid confusion and enforcement difficulties, at least at the beginning. As we understand it, the state has announced that it intends to start issuing licenses in January of two thousand and eighteen, but that is not driven by any particular statute and the state actually may start to issue license sooner. So, in order to get everything in place, we are recommending that the council aim to have whatever new regulations it wants to adopt in place by early two thousand and seventeen to make sure that you, they're in place before the state starts issuing licenses. So, that gives you about a year. Are there any questions?
Right. Who wants to start?
I'm not quite sure that I have questions that are appropriate at this time. I'd like to hear from the subcommittee on why they feel that something that the voters of California have voted on to make legal medical marijuana is such an urgent issue.
How about this? And I agree. If there are any questions for staff at this time?
I have a question.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure. I got an email today from Dana Dilworth and she included an article addressing this. Did you happen to receive that and review that?
Yes. So, the March first deadline was really a short deadline that the legislature imposed on cities and there was at least an argument, and a rather strong argument, that cities that did not have some sort of land use regulation in place governing commercial cultivation would lose permanently the jurisdiction, essentially, to adopt any regulation over commercial cultivation in the future if they didn't have something in effect before March first. So, cities were scrambling frantically to get something on their books and what most cities that didn't have anything were doing was doing an outright ban because they didn't have the time, the legislature didn't give them the time, to go through a thoughtful process about what restrictions they really wanted to impose. And so, I think, it's my understanding that the advocates of medical marijuana realize that this was not a result that was good for anyone. And fortunately, there was an urgency bill and that March first deadline was lifted. So, there's no longer an argument that those cities who do not have a regulation on the books by March first are then preempted from regulating commercial cultivation. But that March first deadline, which is now gone, but when it was on the books, only applied to commercial cultivation. So, now the urgency is over. The only time issue, as I mentioned before, is getting whatever policy decisions that need to be made, and any new restrictions that the council may want to adopt, done before the state starts issuing licenses. Otherwise, the state will begin to issue licenses and there may be businesses that then have a license from the state to operate in Brisbane at the same time the council is trying to perhaps put some restrictions. So, I agree that that March first deadline is gone. The only piece of what's in front of you that was at all connected to the March first deadline is the resolution in front of you. And the only thing that the resolution does, it just announces to the world that you do have currently a ban on commercial cultivation based on permissive zoning principles.
Okay.
That, of course, that policy can be changed.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I don't have any other questions.
All right. So, I don't have any questions for staff either. I'm where you are, Terry. Yeah, let's open it up to the subcommittee.
Yeah, I'll start. Yeah, the first part is just reiterating, you know, with the resolution, what we currently have on the books in regards to commercial cultivation. The other items that we had gone through, and I think that's numbered three through seven, or three through eight on the staff report, three through six, actually. We went through each one of those and discussed, you know, what we as a subcommittee would be willing to allow. And frankly, you know, for banning cultivation of personal use in every zone, that was one, you know, we actually consulted with Commander Meisner on the perspective from the police department. And he gave some insightful stuff about where we had an incident here in Brisbane where houses were being rented out. And these were allegedly caregivers who were cultivating numerous plants in the houses and stuff like that. And it creates safety hazards in different ways. One is by utilizing the grow lance and stuff like that to start using extension cords and outlets that kind of overload the current on maybe a particular circuit and it could cause a fire. Another one, and Bob, I'm gonna refer to you on this because of your personal experience of what you had. If you're willing to share that, I would like to, the rest of the council to hear that, too.
Certainly, as Councilor Conway was speaking about originally, an incident where we had several caretakers co-op-ing together. Again, a loophole in the law, so to speak. So, then they were using an entire house, every room in the house to cultivate marijuana. And, you know, those things start to become a quality of life issue for people in the neighborhood when they see that happening or know that's going on. That house ended up becoming a crime statistic as well because somebody found out about it, broke in and stole a bunch of the marijuana and that's how we initially got into the house. To our surprise, it was, there's nothing we could do about it because of the way the laws were written. So, from that respect, the recommendation was to give the council the option to control it at your level until maybe the state can prove that they've set up regulations that kind of address these type of loopholes. The personal experience I have is I purchased a home that was once used as a marijuana grow house and, you know, what, you don't really know what you're getting into until you actually own one. And so, that becomes a future hazard and future problems for people who want to move into town and maybe encounter one of these houses that's been used for these type of uses, so.
And mold issues and stuff like that?
Mold issues, electrical hazards that are hidden because they do tap into the electrical prior to the meter. And if they hide that effectively, like myself, I didn't find out till five years later that I had exposed wires in my main wiring into my house. So, I guess the caution is, at this stage in the game, it would be our recommendation to restrict it or prevent it until another time when you could take a look at the regulations and maybe decide at that time to address it a different fashion.
I have a question based off of this. How many incidents have we had? It sounds like there's one incident in particular that you're referencing, but have there been any other instances of grow houses in Brisbane that you've come across?
Yes.
How many?
I don't have a number, but several. A lot of them end up being hazard problems. We've had transformers explode because of illegal grows. Again, they tap in the electrical and before the meter and it draws an enormous amount of electricity. We've had houses that have been flooded and ruined as well, again, at the expense of the renter. They usually rent these houses, so some renter thinks they're renting it to a reputable person and later find out their house has been destroyed.
Do you know how many were within this loophole versus how many were just outright illegal? Like how many had displayed paperwork that were, they were a co-op of multiple caregivers?
That was just the one, but that was kind of a wake-up call to us to what we might expect in the future if we don't get a handle on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, that basically was, you know, a deciding factor, you know, for us, you know, is to make this recommendation on number four in the banning delivery of the medical marijuana. Originally, I was a bit ambivalent on it, you know, myself, you know, knowing where Lori was at, she can speak for herself on it. But again, you know, we discussed this with Commander Meisner and, you know, the thought on that was, you're just not really sure what potential crimes could happen with that because what type of delivery service is gonna have marijuana delivery on it or whatever? But it's more like you got this product that is, you know, I guess, highly desirable and the potential of the driver probably carrying sums of cash and that there could be some potential crime issues with that. And Bob, if you want to speak to that, too. be some potential crime issues with that. And Bob, if you want to speak to that too, and it kind of convinced me that, you know, it's something we could always change, but we don't really have that great of data on it right now. So, you know, being a small town, you know, very few streets, ins and outs, you know, could be a little risky. So, we wanted to be a little conservative on that. So, Bob, if you want to add anything to that?
Sure. You know, just keeping my ear to the media, there's been several of these type of robberies just in the, in the recent weeks, February eighth in Antioch, February ninth in Pleasant Hill, a little before that, I think, January in San Diego. And those are just the ones that were, you know, made newsworthy headlines. But so, I'm sure there's others that, that didn't. So, the potential's not only there, it's, it's happening already. And I think the other concern is despite good intentions of marijuana laws in the past, to provide medical marijuana for, for those who need it for their ailments, the, so far, legislation has really left us in the lurch in terms of how to deal with some of the problems that go along with that. So, we would feel more comfortable from the police standpoint to, you know, give you guys the right to ban everything completely at this point, give the state the opportunity to see what they come up with in terms of regulations. And if those meet a standard that can, the council can be assured that it could be delivered safely into town, then you're free to change the regulation at any time at that point.
Yeah, I have a question for the two of you, you know, in regards to that. So, you know, I did talk with Chief Macias and, because she's quoted in the, in the staff report by, you know, you know, the potential of theft, you know, having someone rob the truck and the driver. But, you know, I was thinking, well, you know, what if, if someone's bedridden? You know, how would they receive the medical marijuana? Was that something you, that you talked about?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we did. And it was like, you know, using a, a third-party person, you know, that would, like a caregiver that would get it for them.
So, that, that, that's an option that someone has, is that they, they could have someone purchase it on their behalf?
I mean, there.
It'd still be delivery. If I may, delivery is defined very specifically under state law. And it's essentially a service that a dispensary provides to the end user. And the end user is either the patient, the primary caregiver, or it could be a testing facility. And so, my reading of the new state law, again, there are no regulations on this, is that a primary caregiver delivering it to the patient for whom that person is, is a primary caregiver would not fall under the delivery definition of the state. So, they would not need a license. And to the extent that what you are banning is delivery services as defined by the state, you would not be precluding a primary caregiver from bringing medical marijuana products to that person's patient. And we could certainly draft, if, if you wanted to ban it, ban it or have any sort of regulation, it could be drafted to make that abundantly clear.
Okay. And, and, and just so we have clarity, so when you're talking about a primary caregiver, you're talking about the person's doctor?
No, I'm talking about the person who takes care of the person. And it's very clearly defined under state law who a primary caregiver is. A primary caregiver can actually purchase medical marijuana from a dispensary legally on behalf of a patient. A primary caregiver can only have, give primary care to up to five patients.
Okay.
And, and the definition is very much hands-on care.
Okay. And then, you know, all the, the patients that, that would receive the medical marijuana, do all of them have primary caregivers? Or, you know, are some that don't have a primary caregiver, they just, they do it themselves?
So, no, a patient doesn't have to have a primary caregiver. But if, a, a primary caregiver is someone who provides a certain level of intensive hands-on care to a patient as defined under state law. And if you are a person who meets that pretty rigorous standard of being a primary caregiver for a patient, you then can purchase on behalf of one of your, your patients.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one of the people under your care. These are not physicians generally that are providing it.
Oh, okay.
Their helpful friends or paid assistants.
Yes.
So, it sounds like what you're getting at, you know, is that even if we put in place these regulations, there's, it's not like we're preventing a resident in, in town who needs this, who needs the medical marijuana from getting it by other means. They can go wherever it is available, you know, outside our city limits and, and purchase medical marijuana. And they can still bring it in to town and, and use it here. They have other means of doing it. Is that what you're?
Well, I'm just trying to understand, you know, what are the, the means of being able to get it? So, you can get it on your own, but say you can't get it on your own, then someone has to get it for you. But then, I guess they need to be a registered primary caregiver. It can't be someone else.
So, if you're housebound?
Yeah. And so, but I just want to get, so.
It's a rigorous process.
True. Okay. But yeah, I just want to get, you know, that clarity. Because I mean, you know, you don't want to, I mean, people are suffering. And if this is something that helps them to ease their pain, you know, should we be putting up these, these roadblocks that, that, that prevent that? Now, I mean, I understand the, the possibility of, of someone robbing the, the delivery person. What if the, the, that the person doesn't take cash transactions? It's only, you know, done, you know, with credit card or it's done over the internet.
It's usually paid in.
Kind of like a, like an Uber, you know, type of situation. It's already done.
Can't do that yet.
So, it's my understanding that the regulations, which will be adopted, but it's too early, they haven't, they haven't been drafted, are going to address things like the amount of, of cash that can be carried, the quantity of marijuana that can be carried on essentially the truck. Presumably, the delivery person would be making multiple deliveries. So, even if, you know, the quantity to one individual is quite small, you can imagine how if you added up enough deliveries, it may be larger. But that there will be state guidelines that are regulating very specifics about deliveries that are intended to address some of the security concerns. The difficulty, as I understood it from the, the committee, was that those, those regulations haven't been drafted yet. So, it's difficult to say whether they will be effective or not.
Should we?
To re, to just expand upon what the committee discussed. So, you know, I, I agree with everything Clark said. And, you know, we were kind of coming at it from, you know, we're a small community, the houses are close together. And so, we have, you know, the potential for some pretty big negative impacts from having grow houses, you know, as your next-door neighbors. You know, it's not like, you know, maybe some other communities that are more spread out. So, we wanted to be more mindful of, you know, who would you want to be your neighbor kind of thing, thinking. And then also as to the commercial cultivation, you know, we were just, our, our thought was, well, you know, in terms of, you know, economic development, this isn't something that we feel that, you know, is necessary for our community. There's other ways that, you know, we can look for economic development. And that's not the, the type of, of business model that we, we really want to support at this, at this time. And, and so, you know, you know, and, and we relied heavily on the, the police in, in saying, you know, what the, what the risks are of, you know, of if there's a lot of product or a lot of money and, you know, being a target for the crime. We didn't, we didn't want that risk to be there. So, we felt like the short-term, the, the most conservative approach would be to, to ban it as recommended in the staff report.
Okay. All right. Clark, you have some more things you want to?
Yeah. It's just, you know, it's, you know, again, these are, these are recommendations that are coming from us. And, and it is a conservative point of view, but it's, you know, kind of up to the body of the council, you know, it can choose also. So, just to reiterate that. Number five, where we recommend to initiate a zoning tax amendment to expressly ban marijuana dispensaries. I think this one's more obvious, you know, given the previous discussion, that I don't want dispensaries in the town at all. Is, is it being a small town that it would really stick out like a sore thumb. And I think, you know, larger communities can absorb it in different ways. And I know, I know for a fact that some dispensaries, you know, without even talking to Commander Meisner, that have strong-arm robberies gone in there and just, and, and people have been shot, you know? I mean, there's been some high-crime activities that happened because of what they have there, the, the product that they have and the cash that they have available, you know, on dispensaries. And I, I don't think it would look good on Main Street or in the shopping center. It just, it, to me, it just doesn't fit the community where I think we're, you know, I think as Lori had already reiterated, that we're a small community. So, anything to add to that, Lori?
No. Well, I just want to say though, that actually I talked to my husband about it to hear, but the medical community was thinking about this. And, you know, from, 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 at least from an oncology perspective, you know, we, you know, the doctors acknowledge that, you know, there, there isn't a need for, for patients to get the marijuana for sure. But, you know, there's definitely, there's a big concern that most people are going to use it in smoking form. And that still has the risks and the health impacts of, you know, causing cancer. So, the medical community is, you know, at least the oncology community is concerned about supporting these, the regulations at the state level because of the health impacts and the potential for abuse.
Yes. Yeah.
It's the bigger picture.
There's also, you know, the, you know, the, when you hear about the abuses of, of those painkillers.
Oxycodone.
Derived from, from opium. I mean, that's, that's even a more addictive, you know, form of, of medication that's gotten out of control. But.
So.
So, so in regards to this particular, I mean, you had something?
I was just wondering, because it sounds, I feel like we're kind of like gearing towards discussion, but I just wanted to make sure we were going to include public comment. Because I feel like I'm starting to get a sense of where everyone's at before we've had.
Well, no, I, and I'm, I appreciate your comments. I mean, yeah, no, I mean.
Yeah, we're just, I'm at, we're the subcommittee.
Yeah. You know, typically, you, you ask questions of the staff and you have the back and forth. But here, these were, these are recommendations that really came from the subcommittee.
Right.
And so, we're really, you know, yeah, kind of having those, asking those questions. And then we'll have the discussion after we.
I'm just getting a feel for, you know, everything and how all this stuff works. I just have my, all my Brown Act lessons and my ethical lessons from League of Cities just very ripe in my mind. So, I'm just making sure. So, okay.
And Clark?
And number six, which is the committee recommends that the council direct staff to initiate the zoning tax amendment on other types of marijuana-related businesses. And this is something that, you know, like, you know, whether they want to do research and development. And again, from my perspective, I just didn't think it, it fits Brisbane, you know, that our, our business model. If we want to do some R and D from a, from a biotech perspective, South San Francisco is a great place to do it and can absorb, can absorb that type of research. Because here, again, we're, you know, a small community. And us, you know, I just don't think it fits. And you have anything to add to that, Lori?
No, I, I agree with that.
All right. I, I'm just kind of curious, you know, with our current R and D zoning, if there was a company out of Turplane or up on, off of Guadalupe Parkway, in their coming up with a new drug and it had, you know, part of it was marijuana, you know, cannabis.
G H.
So, would they then now not be able to continue researching, trying to find some kind of?
Care for cancer?
Yeah.
We'd have, thank you. I'm sorry, if they're currently doing it, you may be in a situation where you have a non-conforming use. We'd have to hear a little bit more about the facts to make that determination. But certainly as to new businesses coming in, if you have a, a ban on R and D of any marijuana or marijuana-related products, then they wouldn't be able to, to engage in that in their business.
Yeah. And, and this, so this particular section, in regards to R and D, it's, it's R and D for medical marijuana, not R and D for trying to come up with some kind of commercial product, like a, like a vaping thing that you would sell to the public.
So, so the licenses that are being issued by the state are for medical marijuana.
Medical.
However, the legalization of marijuana on a state level is something that has certainly been talked about and may be a direction that the state is going. My recommendation is if you were going to ban any of the types of businesses that we've been discussing, that your ban be broad to include the ban on marijuana-related, the particular marijuana-related business and not limit it to medical marijuana. Because if the marijuana becomes legalized in the state.
Yeah.
You're in a very strange position of having banned medical marijuana-related businesses, but not non-medical marijuana-related businesses. So, I would suggest that on a local level that you apply the ban broader. And if it is legalized, then you're covered. You can always peel it back if you want. But you still have to address the issue of to what extent do you want to ban these kinds of businesses at all.
Okay. All right.
So, I do have a suggestion on how, I want to say, on proceeding, because I, I think that the resolution is just reiterating our, our current zoning text unless somebody, you know, really has a strong desire to change that. Certainly, the, the subcommittee has no desire to change it. And that would suggest that we pass a resolution and then go through each, each item that we discussed on the, the subcommittee and see where the council as a whole, you know, wishes to proceed. Is that?
Yeah, no, that.
If, if I may, if you turn to page two of the staff report, there is a list of all of the different issues and items. The first of one of which is the resolution that may help streamline.
Okay. All right. So, let's open it up to public comment. Michelle Salmon?
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. First, I would like to read a letter from Dan Ryan that he's submitting, and that's separate from what I have to say. To the Brisbane City Council, my apologies for not being here in person to make this statement, but my rheumatoid arthritis is acting up today and I am in just a bit too much pain to attend this meeting to speak before you. That is why my wife, Michelle, is speaking on my behalf. I do not regularly use marijuana. I smoke it recreationally in joint form perhaps once every four or five years. It is just not a drug that ever did much unbearably wonderful stuff to my metabolism. However, I have suffered from the disease of rheumatoid arthritis for over a decade. And I know from my rheumatologist that marijuana is a viable and safe pain management treatment for me should the medications I currently take for this disease become ineffective for that purpose. I could, if I wanted to, get a recommendation from my rheumatologist tomorrow and get a medical marijuana card for the treatment of my disease within a month of applying for it. Currently, I'm, I am pleased to say that the pain and degenerative joint damage that go with my disease are well managed. And the majority of the time, I can do the work I love, which is taking photographs, which many people have seen me do around town. But the day may come when my disease progresses to the point where I am in so much pain and my joints are so damaged that marijuana will be the only solution that will allow me to lead a tolerable life. Many rheumatoid arthritis and cancer patients have reported the cannabis as the only drug capable of alleviating the horrible effects of their ailment. I may not be able to drive or walk very far or have to rely on my wife or close friends in town to obtain cannabis I'll need for my disease. And if that day comes and I'm still living in our excellent little town and the current marijuana ordinance says the city council the city council is considering have been passed into local law, I'll be screwed. I won't be able to grow my own marijuana, I won't be able to get it locally from a licensed dispensary, and I won't even be able to have marijuana delivered to me by a licensed and bonded cannabis delivery service. These ordinances will, in effect, make my disease more difficult, more unbearable, and less treatable, and I know there are already good people here in Brisbane, some who are personal friends of mine, actually, who have legal, legitimate medical access to marijuana, who may even grow it for personal use to treat a serious disease, whose lives will be needlessly complicated by these ordinances and whatever misguided moralities are behind them. So, to the city council, I say, how dare you consider these obstructionist ordinances, which may not even be legal, that will get in between seriously and chronically ill Brisbane residents and the legal substance that may be the only drug that gives them something close to a decent quality of life. I hope none of you ever get cancer, or rheumatoid arthritis, or any number of painful, crippling diseases for which marijuana can be used as an effective pain and appetite management drug, because if any of you had considered having that kind of life, we wouldn't even be wasting time talking about these ordinances. Dan Ryan, Brisbane resident of nearly 25 years. Plain and simple, in my opinion, this is a fear-based witch hunt. It has no place being put into ordinance. Legislating by exception because we had one growhouse, legislating by supposition that there might be other growhouses masking themselves as marijuana, you know, legal growing, supposition that we might have an armed robbery of a dispensary truck, supposition and exceptions instead of a sound, community-based ordinance. This is ridiculous. It's, it's, it's total fear-based witch hunt against medical marijuana, any form of possibly smoking, any form of infringement. The things that happened to, you know, various houses that were mentioned, those could happen from any kind of mold, any kind of flood, having, you know, growing too many orchids in your house. Yeah, I know, you know, growhouses are an issue, but as Madison pointed out, and asked the question, there was only one growhouse that was masquerading as a legal.
Co-op.
Caregiver facility, or whatever. So basically, these ordinances, one by one, would mean that a person who could not go drive themselves to get to a marijuana dispensary outside the city of Brisbane, oh, how dare you have it in my neighborhood? That's so NIMBYism, I can't stand it, would have to find someone to go drive to the city and get it for them, except in order for that person to go to a dispensary, they would, themselves would have to have a card to pick up marijuana, otherwise they couldn't. Or say they could go and have it delivered somewhere else and then transport it, but say they got pulled over for, you know, a driving infraction, and they don't happen to have a miracle medical marijuana card because they don't use medical marijuana. They're just delivering it. I mean, so where do you draw the line? I mean, I think that this is obstructionist. I think it's legislation for exceptions, and I think it's totally irresponsible on the part of the city council to put these kind of ordinances in place. And in this city council goals, to assure the safety and property of citizens residing, working, and visiting Brisbane. The Safety and Health Committee seems to only be concerned with the people who are healthy and already safe, and not for the people who need, need these services. Preserve and enhance the livability and diversity of neighborhoods. I don't see how this does that. To preserve the unique current character of Brisbane, I don't see how it does that. And to promote economic development that stabilizes and diversifies the tax base? Sure as heck doesn't do that, because when we're talking about fiscal impacts here that were listed, nowhere does it take into account the fiscal impact of the potential incredible loss of revenue that the city of Brisbane would face by banning these businesses like research, research. I mean, right now, I've heard of miracle medical, I can't even say it anymore, I'm so upset, but dispensing cannabis in a form that doesn't even have any, any hallucinogenic properties at all. It's just this, I guess, some CBC component that is only pain relief. Okay? And yet, you are willing to throw the baby out with the bathwater because you're all worried that somebody's going to move in next to you and grow marijuana in their house? I mean, this is a law about social change over time. Eventually, there will be no need to have illegal growhouses, because it's not an illegal substance, and so people can legally, safely grow it, and not have to hide in some rental property, and it wouldn't be something that people would be looking to steal. It'd be like going and stealing something out of your vegetable garden, except that you guys are making it the big bugaboo, the big witch, and that creates more desire for it when it really should just be like anything else. And, you know, it's far less dangerous than opioids. Opioids are really a dangerous thing. And even though those are regulated as a prescription drug, the black market on those has soared to unbelievable levels. And for people who can't take opioids as a pain relief, what else is there? Oh, you know, I have to have my leg cut off, I think I'll take some Tylenol? I mean, so I think you people really need to stop and look at the 21st century, and Lori, as much as I respect Ray, one oncologist's opinion shouldn't, hearsay at that, should not be discussed as, you know, an opinion for the council to take. If you're going to cite something, cite the actual report that says, you know, 50, or 80, or 100% of oncologists have no use for medical marijuana as a treatment. I mean, that's just, that's hearsay, I'm sorry. So I really, I feel that, I feel that this is really fear-based, and it goes right along with some of the other fear-based ordinances we have, like, oh my god, we can't have a tattoo parlor in Brisbane, okay? Oh my god, I can't, I mean.
You're gonna wrap it up?
Yeah, I'll wrap it up, but I think we need to stop having fear-based exception ordinances based on one or two incidences. It's just as easily to rob somebody from, you know, taking cash from Midtown Market or some other business in Brisbane as it is, you know, you could rob the ice cream truck and probably get more money than you would from a dispensary truck. So let's get realistic and stop making fear-based witch hunt-type decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, council discussion?
If I could, if we can go back, if the council's amenable to it, I would like to make a motion to pass Resolution 2016-07 to just reiterate what we currently have in our zoning ordinance. And what it does is.
All right, and that's just banning the commercial cultivation of marijuana in every zone in the city?
It's currently banned.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is just making that statement clear.
But also on it, I'd like to get the correct spelling and full spelling of your name.
You are correct, yes. I did not see that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so, discussion on that, this item?
If it's already on our books, I'm not quite sure why we need to reiterate it?
Well, as council had said, it's basically just to make sure going forward that, you know, we have this zoning law, and it just makes it clear if you want to, I'm paraphrasing you.
I'm happy to do that. We do have a ban. The ban is based on permissive zoning ordinances. Some cities like Brisbane have structured their zoning ordinance such that if a use is not specifically defined in the zoning ordinance, then it is not a permitted use at all, so it's banned. And commercial cultivation is not addressed at all in the zoning ordinance, nor is it similar to any use that is in the zoning ordinance. So based on that, and the way that you, the zoning ordinance is written and structured, you have a ban based on the fact that it's not addressed as a permitted or conditional use, therefore it's not allowed. The reason for the resolution is that the League of Cities is suggesting that cities adopt a resolution along this line if they are banning commercial cultivation based on permissive zoning, to make clear that this, that under state law, let me back up a minute. State law does not allow the state agency that will issue license, to issue a license for commercial cultivation in any city that bans commercial cultivation.
Wouldn't the state understand that our law that is currently on the books, the way it is written, does not allow commercial cultivation?
The state may not be clear on that, because there isn't an express provision in the zoning ordinance that says no commercial cultivation. So the League of Cities is recommending that cities pass a resolution along this line. Now, the urgency to do so before March 1st has now gone away, so there isn't an urgency that this happened tonight. However, all you're doing is making clear to the world that based on permissive zoning principles, our zoning ordinance currently bans commercial cultivation. It doesn't preclude you from changing that policy or amending your zoning ordinance in the future.
But this is a first step in the overall recommendation to do an all-out ban on everything medical marijuana in the entire city of Brisbane.
This, this particular item does not change the law in any way. This is just a declaration of what the existing law.
A declaration of, of the direction that, that this, this entire recommendation is.
Just declaring what we currently have, that's all. It's just making clear that this is what our zoning tax is, and that's it.
Okay, well, I have a lot of comments on the rest of it, so.
Okay, yeah.
On this particular item, Madison?
Oh, I was just going to give my opinion about.
Okay.
Whether I support or not on, on this one. Commercial cultivation, I am willing to support adopting this particular resolution as it's written, and compromise in this area and making this clear. But like Terry, I do have many comments on the next item on the agenda.
Okay, so.
I'd be happy to.
So there was a motion, and there was a second.
I'm in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, then in regards to the other items. So, how are you guys all feeling about these things, Terry? You said you had some items.
I would like to take a five-minute break if we can, because I think.
Clear your head.
No, 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 I don't need to clear my head. I just think that we should take a five-minute break, because I think we have a lot of stuff to discuss.
Let's go smoke a joint.
All right, I'll take a five-minute break.